Okay. No, but like trying to get like up at six o'clock in the morning and I had work until like eleven.
Adam, we're good. Okay.
My biggest issue. So I came to try and look at someone who has some.
For me, I start.
We're up on you. Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Um Jeff, can you please uh call roll?
Uh Mr. Bahavich.
Here.
Mr. Mignoli.
Here.
Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Alright, tonight we are here to discuss zoning application zero N dash twenty-one uh dash zero seven east of uh US twenty-three. Fourth uh Orange Center Drive west of Highfield Drive.
Uh Mr. Bahavich, if I can just say something real quick, um I wanted to let the the commission know that uh recently our zoning secretary passed away Cindy Davis. Um she worked with the township for. I'm gonna get sad, sorry. She were. Um she worked for the township since uh twenty fifteen. Sorry. I had a whole speech and now I can't even say it. Um. Well, I think some of you may have remembered her, but she did our minutes for the last eight years and. Um she used to come to the the meetings and she would be the one to do the shorthand and I didn't even know what that was. It was looked like scribbles to me, but um you know, she was really dedicated to the township and. Yeah. Sorry.
Guess we can. Give a moment of silence for her. You know her.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, sorry about that, Michelle. I didn't even see that on here. Um I apologize. Alright, so tonight we're here to discuss uh the zoning application um. That I just mentioned um that is currently FR one uh asking to be rezoned to ECD uh commercial office district. Um Jeff, do you have anything uh out of the staff comments that you wanted to cover first or go through those?
Yeah, we had we had some staff comments um after reviewing the most revised middle. Uh we can go through real quick. There's not very many of them. Um the first one is the staff uh still does not support the height uh sign for the monument sign. Uh there was no nighttime exhibit uh shared with this revision. Um the staff would prefer to have channel lettering. Um if the monument sign's gonna be lit, we would prefer just having the the lettering to be lit and not the whole sign. Uh the second one can be just an administrative uh change here for for the applicant. Uh it's just some clarification on the the couple types of signs that they showed in the exhibits. Um that can be handled administratively and doesn't have to be part of this. Um and um number three, uh section fourteen point zero six, uh we just wanna have some the same all the way through. Um consistency with the responses. They responded to all the other sections per line. Um and sections fourteen point zero six, they didn't go uh statement by statement for responses. So it's just something minor that we would like to so be uniformed all the way through. Uh the divergences, uh they had all the divergences they requested. However, with the new revised middle, uh they did uh propose monument signs for the three art out parcels um or outlots. Um our code only allows one monument sign per uh parcel. Uh since this is all one parcel, they would need to seek a divergence to allow the the other three monument signs. On number five, uh for the apartment standards, materials, setback standards, uh building separation and other criterion development text, it's kind of spread out throughout the development text. Um some other rezoning cases that we have received in the past, kind of put a table with their development standards in the front of the development text. It kind of shows what the setbacks are, materials, uh separation, things like that. So if they could just create a table to show it, uh so we can look at one place and not have to scramble through the text that is kind of spread out. Then staff would also uh they would like to see more architectural elements um on the building. Uh we suggested using uh similar design as the new Albany location uh that just got approved. Did add some brick columns to to the elevations to break up uh the blank walls, but staff would like to have some more uh elements as possible. Uh for Mike Clark, for the Orange Township Fire Department, uh they had received one set of plans. They just received another set, I believe yesterday. Um that Mr. Clark had stated today to me um that we want to make sure the plans that the fire department sees are the same plans that we are approving or or viewing. Um so they have submitted that yesterday to Mr. Clark. And then uh with our operations director, uh we asked for an easement, for a thirty-foot easement along twenty-three. Um they provided it south of Orange Center Drive. Um and we would request that there be an easement north of Orange Center Drive along twenty-three. Then also an easement from the intersection of Orange Center Drive on the south side of Orange Center Drive to the east, to the connection where their path uh is shown to the end at the. Um at the entrance to their development along Orange Center Drive. That way, there's no there's no gap between the if we have a future path that would connect to the path up to twenty-three if we get that in the future. And that is all that we had.
Okay. Um does applicant wish to uh go through this list or or discuss the changes?
I both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
My name is Dustin Doherty and with Civil and Environmental Consultants, that address is two fifty west Old Wilson Bridge Road, tweet two fifty Worthington, Ohio four three zero eight five. Thanks again for allowing us to come back in and resubmit, taking your time. Starting just from the top with the the sign, would like to mention that last time we uh we originally proposed a twenty-two and a half foot sign. And we have um heard your comments. We we've listened to them as well. And right now we are proposing a ten-foot sign, a ten-foot pylon sign that's gonna be proposed along US twenty-three on the frontage just near the the fuel center. That is going to also include um uh a brick facade on the bottom, as you could see in the schematic that we proposed. Well, we're we realized that the existing code is eight foot and we're proposing a ten foot. So we're still trying to request a divergence for the sign height, although we're we're no longer proposing something that that's similar in nature to uh the neighboring property. Uh with that being said, we are requesting that to be backlit. And one of the comments that was discussed the last time that we met was the the way that it looked with the the white and the the red. And it was the coloring of that. And there was some concerns that 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 sign would would look uh very bright because of the the colors that were being used and being backlit. We're we're proposing something that that's uh a much more neutral now, as you could see in the image that you're looking at. It it's a lot more red and very, very little white that's being exposed. So the the light is gonna be filtered through that color. We still want it backlit. We still want it to be flush. We would do not recommend doing channel lettering uh at this location. Um due to the fact that the channel lettering, there there's several issues that would occur with that. One is water would easily intrude into that, um causing damages down the road, operation maintenance concerns. The other one is is that roosting and nesting for animals and wildlife and birds that would occur and things that birds do while they're there. So we we don't want that to to occur with that channel lettering. So we highly recommend that we continue to keep this this flat. We do request a divergence from the text to be able to request the monument sign at ten feet. Um if we would be happy to provide a nighttime exhibit of what that would currently look like illuminated, if that's how we could proceed. Uh number number two is the administrative. Uh number three, I do have a question with respect to that. Um if I could get some clarification on the number three under section fourteen point zero six. If you go into the code that we submitted on page seven, you know, you'll see at the very end of fourteen oh six, we've got a description of how we're going to be in compliance with. A, C, and everything through F, I believe, with the exception of B. And then B is called out in an exhibit because of the divergence requested. So I'd like to know what more clarity you're requesting with respect to that section that we could provide.
Yeah, so like the text, like even at page seven, it responds to to every.
So instead of putting it at the end after on page seven, you want us to put this PCD will be in conformist, no divergence requested for every item.
It's just, yeah, just for consistency, because you're doing that for every section.
So is that again, that's something that we can do just administratively?
Yeah.
I'm hoping. Okay, fantastic. Um. Uh again, we already talked about number five being a table that we could put on and that would not be challenging or hard and that we could handle that administratively. Number six, with the architectural elements to to break up the space. So uh I think we talked about the the structure and the facade of the building being a a couple monotone colors, red and and a white. That would that would be length in nature. So we've broken that up and we've put in a couple of brick columns there to be able to to break those elements, take the line of sight. From either the north of the south and the distance and be able to to give you some some edges to that building. You could see it there. Well, we put it both on the the west face and on the on the south face. So that tho- those both of those will be able to to be visible from individuals. I will say that the the building that was in New Albany, what was one hundred percent brick, if I'm correct, in that building was um required by code. Uh just because every other brick in the area, if you go to New Albany, the standard is is brick and there everything's in brick there. That's not the standard here. And because of that, doing doing a building of that nature along this corridor would not be in compliance with everything else that's along there. It would it would stick out tremendously. So what we've done is we've tried to to comply with your previous comments and requests by breaking that up with the with a few columns on the front. Then going to Mike Clark's, the fire department. So we did submit plans to that individual in mid-January and followed up with him about three or four times via email and phone call. And because there wasn't a a formal consensus here through the zoning board, he neglected to review the plans that we submitted. So instead, what has happened is we did submit plans yesterday. Um the only thing that's changed from the plans that we submitted in January to the plans that we've submitted yesterday was the drive-through. The drive-throughs for the three out parcels, what we did is is um we allowed curb cuts to occur. We're now stacking them on the south side and the east face and putting the 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 window board there so that those drive-throughs can can go around the buildings appropriately. So you're not seeing the stacking occurring on the frontage of the buildings. So uh we have addressed all of his comments that he did provide. He did review it once in in late twenty twenty-one. And the extent of his comments at that time, if I remember correctly, we're providing additional fire hydrants around the the um tenant anchor commercial building. So that we could have space, appropriate spacing for that. We added that additional hydrant in and should be in compliance. Uh and then the last comment there from the township director, it appears as if that they're requesting a couple easements. If I understand correctly, one of the easements um is north of Orange Center Drive along twenty-three. So right now, we and I believe we had this discussion at one point in time, and I think there was a comment from the Delaware County Engineers Office a- as well. Is that they did not want a- anything extended north of Orange Center Drive along twenty-three on the east side. And there's a variety of reasons for that. One is is that there is a a huge box culvert that goes under twenty-three. That that's got retaining walls and and headwalls and wing walls and it's got guardrails. And that box culvert would have to be extended for anything that that is able to occur from a pedestrian connectivity or pedestrian standpoint. And that would need to be some sort of conspan or bridge or or extension. They they have no plans or anticipation of ever extending or expanding that in that area. And there's a stream right there as well to to accommodate that that box culvert. So they they don't want pedestrians in that area. It it would be unsafe. And and there's no future plans from ODOT standpoint to be able to do anything. Furthermore, the the engineer told us to remove that path that we were originally showing for the those very reasons. So but nevertheless, we would be able to provide the the easement from Orange Center Drive to the southern property on the east side of twenty-three. We could provide that easement that if the there so chooses to be a path to be installed along there at some point in time. We did talk to the Orange Township Director about extending a path. So one of the things that we've done from our last submittal was we tipped the pedestrian connectivity that was going to the out parcels. And what we did is we looped it around the fuel center. And then we tied it into what I'll call the the teardrop at the laundry facility on the southern southern property. So there's a curb right there, um and that was the location that that was discussed and decided. You could see it right there. So we are connecting in an existing path. So it it seems a little redundant that we're having pedestrian connectivity go from our site into the southern property where there's no receiving ramp. And then also providing in the proposed easement on the east side of twenty-three, but we will do so if we could continue to get approval with condition this evening. Additionally, the uh the easement from US twenty-three on the south side of Orange Center, from twenty-three to what I'll call right there, that our private access drive. We can provide an easement there as well for a future path to be extended. So with that, I think that that goes through all of the the staff's comments and and addresses those, the reasons behind that. Um the only other thing that I'd I'd like to be able to to touch on now, if I could, was the the lighting and the pole lights. So I know this was something that we've discussed multiple times now in our meetings. And we originally proposed a thirty-two and a half foot pole. And that was going to meet the photometrics for both the minimum foot candles, which is basically the amount of illumination that you see. And also the average to the min, and that's basically the the uniformity of light that occurs on the site. So those those photometrics are in the in in place for a reason. Those metrics are in place for a reason. The only way that we're able to achieve those photometrics is by installing the the lights where we have them proposed at that height. What we did though is in in trying to be able to address the spirit of the comments that we provided previously, is we looked into twenty-foot poles. And being able to provide those in every island, those poles are not high enough to be able to achieve the minimum foot candles that are needed. So you will have literal dark spots that will be there that'll provide safety and concern. Additionally, we also looked at some some hybrid in between of being able to do twenty-five foot poles in the same location in every island. And although you can get, you can achieve the minimum foot candles, because now the the radius gets bigger, the average to min is is exceeded at that point in time. So the uniformity is no longer um in compliance. So the only way that we've been able to do this is to be able to propose the thirty-two and a half foot pole. We are requesting a divergence for that, and that's the reason why you still see it before you today. We respectfully request that you you consider those reasons as we've discussed in the past, in addition to that conforming with the rest of the uses in the area.
Jeff, a little history on the monument sign, especially for outlots versus having multiple businesses on on one monument sign. But what does the code say for that? Well, yeah, you should tell me just a little bit about where that's at. I can I can see it for a shopping plaza that would want one sign rather than each one of the businesses. Having their own monument just because of the clutter. If you have individual outbuildings, where does this come from that limits that to one monument?
Yeah, so it it states that it's on one parcel or one tract of land. Uh since they're not gonna be split, it'll be it's still one parcel. So it's multiple uses that are on one parcel. So it it limits to one. Um like south of that is Walmart, um but the like Wendy's and and McDonald's, those are individual parcels that were parceled out. They are allowed to have a monument sign. So it's a little bit tricky with just just the way our code is written.
Yeah, I because it has nothing to do with dimensions. It's just a matter of.
Right. The the outlaw plans that they submitted here for the sign do meet our code standards for the setbacks and and display areas. So it's just the the number of monument signs is what they'd be seeking.
And another question to you is that what is this though, light height at Walmart and that whole whole situation? Do you know what those were?
It's thirty, they range from thirty-one to thirty-three and a half.
So they were there pretty much what what you're requesting. Okay. Appreciate the fact that you made that large sign a lot. Cut it down, Jeff. Now it's it's still a little big, but I'm gonna call it range versus. Guess I hear your uh. Issues with the channel lighting versus. That all seems to make sense to me. Anybody still using, I know that was staff comments, Jeff, with respect to the 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 channel lettering. Where did that come from as as far as where it's used and?
I they use it on the Walmart sign. They were comparing it with Walmart. Uh Walmart has the channel lighting, our channel letters are just a little bit of backlight. That was kind of what, and maybe maybe it it needs to be more clear on the sign details. Um and and if you do provide a nighttime exhibit, I think that would help uh to show what exactly is being illuminated on this sign. Um and then also the tenant signs. Um that looks like a big white space that's gonna be illuminated. So either be have specific of what this is gonna be um or certain colors that they're allowed to use. Our code allows five max.
I mean, at this point in time, those tenants could have a variety or a spectrum. They're gonna be logo specific. You know, for me to guess at the colors that's gonna be proposed there would be a a guess at best at this point in time. So I I understand your concern and how how can we work together to be able to a- at least propose that now?
Um I would just, I mean, if if you're gonna comply with uh Article twenty-two of our sign standards, we'll just we'll deal with that at the permitting process.
Okay, that's fan- that's fantastic. So, you know, and and we we understand that when we get to that point, when those get to be fully developed, there may be opportunities for us to come back and present elevations besides in more details at that time.
Yeah, and and you can you could put in here the max display for the outlots are gonna be thirty-eight square feet per side. Or if you want them to comply with our code, then they could be actually bigger than this, if they're just gonna comply with our code.
Yeah, we we are just, we were placing this here for two reasons. One, to be able to show you the proposed height of the monument signs and the number of monument signs. After that, we we want to comply with the text moving forward for those out parcels.
Yeah, so so I know we have it in some other locations where the development text limits the size of the monument sign. So I don't of the display area of of their monument size. With BJ's being the primary tenant, anchor tenant, they might not want another sign that's gonna be eight feet tall and sixty-four square feet per side. Because if it meets the code, I believe that is what it could be at that setback. So right now, your proposed thirty-eight square feet per side.
Yeah, but we're in, we would want to be able to meet the code if that were the case. So we want these monument signs to meet the code. We're just showing um the size height right now of that sign.
Right. So so if they're gonna meet the code, right now it shows thirty-eight square feet on the side. Our code allows, because it's gonna be setback thirty feet based on site plan. Our code allows sixty-four square feet per side for the play area. So it could be more, it could be bigger than the sign that you're showing here.
So when we go to.
If you want a specific, if you want to set your outlots that they can only have thirty-eight square feet per side, then you can do that in your in your tax. Or if you want them to meet the code, then they're allowed sixty-four square feet per side. So that's gonna be a a pretty big sign. I don't know.
We want we want the greatest flexibility moving in for the future to be able to to abide underneath the existing code. So at this point in time, because of the unknown of what that anchor tenant would be, we still want to be able to provide that flexibility. So the route that we would like to be able to take is to be able to use the eight-foot height sign, which is the maximum allowable under the code. And then we'll comply with the code for those monument signs that we're proposing in the future.
Now we're talking about three monument signs. Remember that.
Mm-hmm.
Or as 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 you as you decide and say, well, that size doesn't matter. Now we're talking about three of them.
Well, that's my question though, is if it's allowed, I thought. Help me out here, that you're allowed one for the outlots. And if they've requested divergence for three, that doesn't necessarily mean all three should be the fullest extent of the signage allowed.
They're only allowed to have one for this entire track. So that's the BJ sign if that we're looking at. But then they came in with their last submittal at requesting monument signage for each of the outlots. They won't be parceled out. So it does not, they would have to seek a divergence to have one per user.
Exactly. So and then the question is, if we grant that divergence, we would then have to specify what size all those little or big signs would be for each outlaw.
Oh, yeah, you can't.
It's not like anything goes.
Yeah, oh, well, if if I I guess maybe this different, I would believe if you grant the divergence to allow for multiple mon- monument signage, signages. Um and you didn't have any further standards in place, it would just go back to Article twenty-two.
Okay, so what you're saying is if we do grant more than one sign, in this case, we're talking about four. One for the BJ's and then one for each outlaw. Each of those four signs could be potentially the, is it sixty-four square feet?
Yeah.
Per side.
Per side. Um so that is something that this commission should consider uh when granting that divergence.
If 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 that's granted, I would want to see uniformity. Not necessarily want to be as big as, you know, given that you're only entitled to one. Uh and if if the divergence is granted, I'd like specification on smaller size, your own sign until that is consistent.
Michelle, I'm surprised this issue hasn't come up before. More with respect to, I I I understand the the definition, it was one parcel. Again, I'm surprised that this way we haven't bumped into this situation.
Well, we really, we really haven't received, uh I guess, a mixed use submittal before. So um I think, you know, typically when we see projects like this, they they are split, like they they're in a commercial subdivision or platted subdivision, so.
Right, because because you have, it it seems to me you have outlots out of the same space apart.
Yeah.
As these on Owen Field.
But those are, it's their own individual parcels.
Everybody has their own monument sign.
And that's permitted, yeah, one per parcel.
Permitting, but those aren't any any larger.
Correct.
Than than what the what what they're, what this particular parcel, which is split into three. Plus I'm saying, I'm surprised it hasn't bumped into before, but that's because the parcels have been split up, have been treated separately. I think that's another reason maybe for the divergence, but I agree, the size should be dealt with. We shouldn't have sixty-four for each side for these three other signs that were version giving you that not allowed.
Well, let me ask this then. So is the board okay with what's what's what was being proposed or shown in the? in the outparcel signage that was just up there, which is twenty-four?
Twenty-four, it's also ten feet.
Thirty-eight.
No, 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 not that. So that is compliant in height? And this is twenty-four feet, or is, or twenty-four square feet under?
This is thirty-eight square feet.
Yeah, but what's, what is it?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. So...
Sixty-four.
Each side, each side, and this is showing thirty-eight each side. So, I, I guess what I would ask was-
What do we need?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is this, you know, a six by six four sign? But if we're just using this as a, as a, just a visual, you know, this is smaller than what the code would allow if this was an individual, you know, slot and we're dealing with it, would this be acceptable to have three of these? It's a smaller sign by twenty-something square feet.
It is still quite a large sign.
Yeah. Well, and that's what I'm saying.
Especially if you start illuminating it, which I assume you're gonna request all these signs to be illuminated from the inside?
Correct.
Okay. That's a lot of light. You have four of them.
Yeah, I mean, the-
I'm just putting that out there.
Right.
But, but sorry, sorry. It matters the size of the sign, I think that, that's probably okay. I mean, one of my questions would be, why did you put that specific size? Was it that you anticipated that would be about the size?
It, it's a placeholder at this point in time. Like I said, the only reason why we were showing the width for what it was, was to be able to confirm that we're not, we're in the spirit of the code, which is eight feet tall. So, right now, that width, based upon what the code allows for the square footage, could expand. So you're not getting a taller sign, you're just getting a slightly wider sign. So that allows your logo to be able to, for whatever logo that may be, to be expanded and put on there.
The truth is, is that these outlots are no different than the ones we have all over Orange Township. On Owen Field and every place else, it's just that it sold as one versus three. It has nothing to do with the size of the parcels, or the size of the buildings, or nothing else other than what the cost.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I guess we can limit it, but I'm not even sure, as I think about it, further why.
Well, the only reason I would want to limit it is so that one doesn't come in with one size and someone else comes in with another. I think the consistency needs to be there, and, um, you know, so, I mean, if that's, I know it's a placeholder for you, but if that's the size, I think that that you put there, I mean, I'm okay with that six by six four. Um, even when you think about the size of the sign, there's some limitation on how much light that's gonna produce, but nonetheless, it will give visibility, all of those three parcels are right there, are, are outlots are right there together. And so since everybody's gonna have their own individual light, as long as it's consistent, I think it should be smaller. I, I'm comfortable with the six by six personally, based on.
Is that something we can guarantee if it's a sign?
We'd be willing, yes, to, to propose that, if, if there would be a respectful divergence granted to allow pylon monument, monument signs, sound like a spaceship. I thought that was real for a second, that's good. Um, as long as there, the monument signs would be granted for the divergence, and as everyone has mentioned, you know, this is, is, is a atypical mixed-use development that we've been in the process for over a year and a half, and so there is a commercial and a residential component without splitting off the actual outlots, which they are outlots. Um, we realize we do fall within the code of the one pylon sign or parcel. We do respectfully request that these get installed for each of the outlots, so there would be three monument signs, they would be no greater than eight feet in height, and I believe that we could agree to the square footage per side, moving forward, as, as no, no greater than for each of those, if we could get approval.
Right, so I just wanted to point out that if you do six by six, now, let's just say it's like thirty-eight or thirty-six square feet per side, per sign, right? And if you multiply that by four, if we're having four signs, or we're just doing three, and the BJ's is still gonna be bigger?
Correct, we would still want the BJ's to be ten foot. So we are, we are proposing the BJ's to be ten foot, and that's for a variety of reasons in our compromise, to be able to reduce it to that height, but still accommodate their logo and their branding and their text and their colors. But these could, could be eight feet. So there would be, there would be four signs still.
But this would be... Because it's, it's a lot of signage, is what I'm getting at. If these are all six by six and there's three of them, that's a hundred and eight square feet of signage. And then if the BJ's, which is approximately eight, let's go back to what BJ's is-
Forty-eight point two.
Forty-eight point two? All right, so we're talking about a hundred and fifty-six square feet of signage. And code allows for, what, again? Sixty-four?
Per, per side.
Per side, per sign.
Yeah.
Per side, per sign. So we're not asking for a, each individual sign divergence, we're asking for the number of signs to be diverged, of divergence on the number of signs. And, and that's because we're also proposing multiple outparcels. So with that being said, each of those signs has regulations according to the code, and each of those signs are allowed up to sixty-four.
The point I'm making is, our code doesn't allow for each of those signs. That's a divergence that we're giving you. And then we're giving you the thirty-six for each of the outlaw signs, when normally that wouldn't be allowed, just the one that is sixty-four per side, correct? If I'm not mistaken? So you're getting more signage square footage.
Right, and we're requesting that because of the way that, that we're proposing our application, which has multiple outparcels.
And I understand-
So similar to that, there is a sign for Wendy's, there's a sign for Burger King, there's a sign for BW3s.
And that is what was allowed previously under the zoning code for that plaza, but if you go to other areas, like the Kroger to the north, some of the outlots are outlots, some of them are put together as a whole building complex with like, um, what's the subway shop? Can't remember the name, or the outbuildings by the Kroger. They're all part of one commercial complex, not individual outlots. So it's like you're taking the old outlaw model, where you would have four or five different parcels. You'd have one for the BJ's, one for each commercial, and then one for your apartment complex, combining it into one and calling it mixed-use, but using the old planning model of the past.
I got you.
Does that make, do you-
I know I got that, if that's true. Is that drift, is that, is that true about that, all those properties at Kroger, is that all those outlots?
Yeah, I mean, I think with Panera and the other-
Those are outlots, but Panera shares a spot with like-
Yeah, it honestly varies, since they're all planned districts, I mean, some of them don't allow monument signs, others do, and have, I mean, it, 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 there's no-
Prime, there's no, yeah. You know, I think, um, this is a little bit of a point that if these were divided up into separate parcels, you know, what's the rhyme behind that? It is a whole-
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that if you're stressing a mixed-use complex, this is not it, if you're using the old planning model.
Well, I think, I guess they asked for diversions on that, I guess, but yeah.
So, that's, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, is that you're using the old planning model, trying to use the new planning language of mixed-use. But still in the old mindset. So, I mean, my concern is, if all of these are internally lit and they have aluminum cabinets, there's gonna be a lot of light. Um, and I do think that the nighttime illustration might help. Um, the problem being is, we know what BJ's is gonna look like, because we have a tenant. We have no idea what the other new tenants are gonna look like.
That's why I like, yes, the idea of, uh, if you could, they could specify the limitations of how much light or what the, what it needs to be composed in, uh, I think would be good. I mean, I know that's a challenge, you could say, I don't know who my tenant is, but, you know, a lot of landlords and others may say, hey, you cannot have this kind of lighting or these kind of specifications that people comply with, you know? And my logo is not, not normally cotton blue, but, you know, it's, you know, red or yellow. But you say it has to be cotton blue and I wanna move here, guess what? It'll be cotton blue and people will know who I am, so, you know? I, I think that, that limitation that you can craft that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, Dustin, I, I guess my question, the way I look at this is, is this, this is a completely different scenario than the BJ's, because the BJ's, to your point in an earlier meeting, sits extremely far back, and the signage is more prominent, and um, it, it's almost that you, you could be going down twenty-three at posted speed limit and be up on top of that building before you know it, but that sign's gonna help. And, and the reduction on the main BJ's sign is, is, in my opinion, a step in the right direction, obviously, you, you, you know, you've significantly reduced it, and, and I appreciate that. On these buildings, the way I see these is a little bit different, and, and like a lot of other buildings that are, you know, and I don't know the exact number, we call it seventy-five feet from the setback from twenty-three off the right-of-way, you're, you're a lot closer. So you, the, the building signage itself, that's on those buildings, is gonna be more prominent, visible from the street as you're approaching the property. And, and I guess my question to you would be, are these three monument signs like a deal breaker? Like, is it, is it something that you guys are willing to strike out completely and say, look, we'll, we'll block the building signage for those three parcels? Uh, and then you always have an opportunity later, say that you have a tenant that says, look, we're, we'd love to be in here, but we're not doing it without a monument sign, there's always an opportunity to, to split that lot out, correct? I mean, I would imagine, it's always, it's always a possibility, if that's like something that they need to have. So, I guess my question to you, and maybe you don't have the answer right now, what, what I don't want to happen is, is this thing become a sticking point to where it's, you know, obviously we want, we want to get you moving along, so do you, do you feel that it, it's a hundred percent necessary that those, there, there needs to be some type of monument sign there? I guess that would be my first question.
I, short answer, yes. So, to let you know, we did reduce, significantly reduced that sign for BJ's for the various reasons that we talked about. The traveling speed and being able to see it far back in the setbacks. Part of it is that, what we wanna do with these outlots and these, these outparcels is be able to provide something that's conforming to the rest of the uses along that. So not, not only are we trying to provide the visibility that somebody would want or would, would desire from a tenant, but also from, um, uh, somebody driving their car would wanna be able to see it from a distance. And so, because of the way that they're currently laid out onto the site, and, and you would necessarily get the logos, or you're gonna be able to wanna see them either from the north or the southern face. So you, you've asked us to put the frontage on the front of the building, they are relatively close to there, so we still wanna be able to put that monument sign out there. So, what we like to be able to do is, is we've lowered the sign tremendously for BJ's to be able to try to conform with the code, and then in light of that, what we were asking for was additional monument signs for the outparcels for that. So it, it was, it was slightly a compromise on our end, and in doing so, what we would like to be able to do is propose a monument sign that, at this point in time, as we've already discussed, we don't know who those anchor tenants are, we don't have logos for them, but they would be no greater than eight feet in height. We could propose that they're no greater than six by six for the, the signage area per face. They will be backlit, and that they will fall with under, the existing code was Article twenty-two, for the only having, uh, five colors. I believe that, that's the regulation. So, if we could put all of that into the text and say, these are the standards that we will comply with for these monument signs, you know, we respectfully request that they still remain within the application.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's a fair point. So, I, I, then I would ask this of the board to consider. So, we, we obviously know that, that the speed of twenty-three and, and, you know, these obviously still have to be something that are visible, that you can physically see. So, you know, a, a three by three, or, you know, a four, like, something like that is probably not gonna be adequate. So I guess, what, what is the threshold? This, looking at this right here, if we're saying this is too big, or, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm just, if, if, if we're saying this is, this is acceptable or it's not, what, what would be acceptable, and, you know, would, would a, a five by five be all right, as long as it's eight foot?
I guess, so my sort of perspective is, and I don't have a problem if you reduce sign, thank you for taking care of that.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned, for me, if I don't know what's there, it's like writing a blank check. Um, we have no idea, um, generally, I don't have a problem with corporate logos. I don't have a problem granting, you know, divergences or divergences or variances for corporate logos. I think it's ridiculous that we can't have a corporate logo like Beachy White Children's Hospital that we had to grant one for. So I don't have a problem with the colors, but what I don't like is, I have no idea what the sign's gonna look like, how much white, how bright it's going to be, um, especially at night, um, especially with a metal pattern around it, um, during the day too. I guess that's my biggest concern, is that you're granting sort of a blank check for these feature signs that we have no idea what they're gonna look like.
They have to meet the sign code.
Yeah.
You, but we are revising the sign code for that purpose specifically. You were basically giving them a divergence, or, sorry.
No, but all we're doing is reducing the sign.
Size of the sign.
These are just outlots and the same size of the outlots we have all over Orange Township.
I, I agree, the, the other thing is, I, I think it's important to establish now for the uniformity, for the consistency to versus they come along later, and then they split up the, those outlots into their own parcel story. And now we got a, one big sign here, someone else comes with something else, so we get it. To me, the consistency is, is much more critically important, that all, if we're gonna do the divergence, which I, I'm in favor of, and, but do believe that we should limit the size of the sign. And if it's subject to the, the rest of the, uh, sign requirements, then even what someone proposes, presumably they can come back here and make sure that it's in compliance with the, uh, with the sign requirements, or, with the limitations of the sign size and so forth. So I think that there is still some control, so to speak, with respect to lighting and what it looks like and all of those sort of things.
And what I'm saying is, I don't think there is any control with lighting if it's internally illuminated. That's what I'm getting at. I mean, that's, that's like, you know, on paper, this looks fine, um...
How do you limit the, the amount of white?
You can't, until you actually see it. That's for me the catch-22.
Let me ask this, because, and, and this is the way-
But y'all could just move on without me, that's okay.
No, no, no. No, I, I just wanna make sure, you know, we're all on the same page, but let me ask this, so if, if we were to, um, if we were to say that, you know, that, that the code allows sixty-four per side, if we were to say that, that this can be no bigger than, than half of that, being, you know, like thirty-two, if we said thirty-two square foot per side, we're granting the divergence for three additional monument signs, and they can't be more than thirty-two square feet on either side, that's half, that's still a, I think, a, a substantial size enough that you, they're still functional signs that people can read them from the street, and, and we say all three have to be the same, the same size, there's no, no exceptions.
Yeah, 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 I think that's what, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the thirty-six person. I've been thirty-seven, I didn't mean anything to before, it's just like-
Well, if we need to define the size, I think we need to define it now, you know, and say, what, what is, what is the number?
Yeah.
Are, are, are we good with this?
I think what, what he's, from my perspective, that's what they put in as a placeholder, I think that's fine. Uh, it's a, it's a smaller size than what would normally be allowed for an individual outparcel, it's significantly less size than that, they're all uniformed, they're all required. I, I'm okay with what, what they put there, personally.
Those outlots would be unsellable if you weren't, didn't have a monument sign. Those outlots would be unsellable if you weren't, didn't have a monument sign. Some other sign out from just signs.
I mean.
No choice.
I've tried to find a happy medium. I don't want to be like Douglas where there are no signs, you can't go find anything.
They're all the same color.
They're all the same color. They're like very TV. I, I don't want to be like that, but I also don't want to be like Las Vegas with a bunch of lights. Um, and so I've tried to find, like I say, a happy medium of, um, of what would work because I don't want to look.
I, I hear what you're saying about adding the total numbers up and, but, but that to me doesn't make any sense. Here's why. It's because these are just individual outlot parcels. That's one parcel because they weren't sold to individuals. Those are sold to individuals in each half.
Right, 64.
Exactly. Outlot signs by our code. We're only limiting this just because there's one buyer.
So it sounds like the, the majority of the board is good with what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Yes? Great. There goes that.
You know, and I, 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 I think in, in order of consistency, well, here's what I don't know about lighting. Here what you're saying about, here we need the 32 feet because I should do the math. Here's what this one does and what the smaller ones don't give us the perfect coverage. I don't know enough about lighting to even comment on the math of all that. Obviously that must have gone on when they built Walmart. You know, that same kind of math, they have the same kind of lighting engineers that are working on it. Just curious whether, just wondered whether that math would already been excited.
And, and the, the comment that was provided previously and the, and the reason why the analysis has occurred the way it did for the various heights was because there was the potential um, proposal to be able to do a divergence from the photometrics as opposed to a divergence from the, the actual height of the light. And um, as, I, I would, I would ask that that would be the opposite. That we, we don't deviate from the actual light that's being provided on the site, but deviate in the height of the pole. And that is because if we start deviating from the light that's being proposed and the uniformity, that does provide um, optical illusions coming with your, your cart to your car. It provides um, dark areas, illicit activity, uh, unsafe uh, visibility. And, and so there, there's a perception from the home, human eye. And that, those were the types of things I was trying to share with you within the email that I tried to provide clarification on. So I, I do request that the, the height of that pole continue to be what we're proposing currently, not any deviations from the photometrics.
So Dustin, on that, have you added, unless I miscounted last time, it looks like you add, did you add a few or did you not change the, the photometric plan at all? It looks like there's a couple more that weren't in, and maybe I just missed them. Do you, do you know if light poles are added to this plan?
I, I'll be honest, I.
It, it's all right.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I may have missed a few here because it looks like you have, you know, almost two per bay or row.
Yeah, we, we, I believe the density got, that got cratered to be able to try to, to help with some of, some of the photometrics. I'll be honest, as I mentioned before, I've, we've done this a lot and, and I, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay.
So from my perspective, when I work with the electrical engineer and they tell me my photometrics don't work, I've always been told, you know, you add more poles, maybe you change the head. So how could they get new facilities like Menards or Cog or whatever to meet code and have the 20 foot lights? And whereas the old model is the 33 foot lights that you have at the Walmart. That's just, I'll just put that out there, um, is what I work on a project. And now granted, I don't do, normally do commercials. I normally do multifamily. Um, but you still have parking lot, light issues with multi family and creepage onto neighboring properties and things like that.
And, and in this situation, and you're right, I don't think we changed the, the, the head. The head is an LED. It, it's um, high standard right now. I think that you would add more lights, but that provides a huge hardship in our, in our position because now you're talking, we don't want to put poles in pavement. We would have to put them in islands and you start putting more poles in and doubling the amount of locations where the islands are. And they, there, there's visibility with that. There, there's a lot more curb that's being installed. It becomes slightly of a headache for the tenants that are able to, to go there. Um, you don't want, you don't want a lot of islands to be able to, in that parking lot.
Yeah, if I remember, I'd ask about what, I remember we went through this before.
The, the code was approved at 20 feet for Kroger.
What, they asked what, what those are 20 feet.
Any more comments on the uh, light poles from the board? All right. Any other comments from the board on other items?
Just, just after the line in uh, that analysis, um, we, when, when we checked Walmart, Walmart was what, 30?
Ran from 31 and a half to 33 and a half.
And you're proposing 32 of it.
32 and a half, that's correct.
Did you check out the Kroger store or what's the?
We checked Kohl's, Walmart, Giant Eagle and Meyer. And, and as he mentioned, the, all of those range from 31 to 33 to the top.
When you tried the 20 foot store, what was?
The, if you do the 20 foot light poles, you don't meet the minimum 0.5 foot candles, which is the amount of light that's being produced on the ground. So because of that, you have dark spots. It's less than that minimum threshold. So the eye registers that spot as dark at that point in time. Even when you increase the density of poles.
Yeah. Don't want to necessarily change the photometrics.
Yes.
That's what's an issue I have. I have that problem. My engineer told me.
Put more poles in.
Put more poles in.
And we don't want to do that.
All right.
I guess, I guess for staff's question, I, we, we wanted to see what the commission's thoughts were on the, the, on the BJ's building itself. If, if you, you were comfortable with the additional elements that they added. Because before it was more um, more of a blank wall and they did add some features and we just wanted to get your opinion on that.
Yeah.
I don't think you would have written a comment, but.
Let's hear it.
All right. Um, I think before last time I complained that it's sort of like a, a red barn or just a, a red warehouse. Um, and I understand why you don't want to face the whole thing in brick. Uh, could you at least, it looks like right now it's a combination of uh, basically concrete wall panel with EpiS, it's like using drive it, you know, with the colors of the EpiS. Is, and I believe we have other buildings in the area that are done in EpiS as well. So the EpiS doesn't bother me. I think more of the painted concrete wall panels. Is there a reason why you can't use like a, a split face colored block, a spec brick, something to sort of spruce it up a bit?
Part of our approach with this is to be able to do the branding of the BJ's warehouse and this is their, their colors and their specs. So when you, when you see this, you see it as a BJ's. You know it's a BJ's. That is consistent with, with BJ's. And so you know, that's what we're trying to propose is to make sure that the lines of sight that you see in vertical and horizontal are consistent with other BJ's that, that are nationwide.
Apparently the one in New Albany does not have those restrictions.
And, and that's because the one in New Albany did have requirements from the board that absolutely required that the aesthetics of that to be installed in all brick. That would be an exception. So this one, much like a large percentage of the other buildings within the nation are consistent with this approach. And so their prototype building wants to be able to have the, the same type of style over and over again.
I guess what I'm saying is you couldn't at least try to meet us halfway.
Well, that's, that's where.
I'm not asking you to face this thing in brick because I think sometimes New Albany with all their brick is a little extreme. But to give us a little, um. What was that?
Speak to the community.
You said it's not me.
I'm with you on that one.
I, I try.
Not just look like everybody else's stuff.
Just, just like I said, try to meet us halfway. I, I don't expect the whole thing to be based in brick, but you know. Um, maybe, you know, some sort of, you know, s- split base block that has a little texture and looks a little nicer than, you know, painted panels. Maybe spec brick. Um, not real brick, but you know, spec brick.
Because it is going to sit right next to or near the multifamily store right now. It looks like a big warehouse.
Yeah, and the final residence, do I want to?
Yeah, look at that.
Live next to the red warehouse? I don't know. I mean, even, I know other areas, um, not in our township, but near us, they do have, you know, large block, um, like Costco or something like that, and they have residences next to it. But I like to think that, um, as less, as it speaks a little more to the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just, just like I said, just a thought. Um, I don't, I want the other people on the board to speak.
I, I mean, yeah, I, I, I think that the pilasters that you added on the front early, what is it, the east and south, or I'm sorry.
West.
The western roadside. I think that was a step in the right direction. Um, I, I get that the you know, the east elevation there is more of a back of house area, but we do have a, a road behind there. I think that like for me, if those pilasters were continued around the perimeter of the building, I think it would make sense. No, I don't necessarily think that I mean, concrete panels need to go away or anything like that. I, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of them, but I'm not saying that it's something that would pull me up from, you know, that, from this project moving forward. But I, I think that if the pilasters could be continued around, it, it would be a, a much better situation, uh, you know, especially since that's facing the road.
Yeah, I, I think that we did take the, the comments that were provided last time to be able to, to break up the line of sight, to break up the colors, to break up the material, to provide some, some shadowing and some, um, just what we've done is, is like you said, we've tried to meet you in the middle with that, with what we're showing. I think that, uh, the, if I understand you correctly, you're talking about the east side that faces the roadway on the east side.
Yeah.
So because the, the south one's going to face the out parcels and they'll, they'll be back to back. So only a portion of that's going to be visible because of the chiller that, that's located there. So you know, with that, I, I would, I would need to talk to the anchor tenant and to be able to, and talk to BJ's to be able to get the approval for that. But I don't think that that should be an issue of them being able to provide some additional columns on there to be able to break up a line of sight on that building. Um, with that, if, if that's something that the, the board would approve.
You know, I mean, this is almost where I sort of differ, but it's the backside of the building. If you don't want to put the columns there, put in some landscaping to hide the building. I, I sort of, I guess I'm more concerned about how the, the neighbors or the community would feel about this building. Um, and how to sort of make it, um, I'm going to say more attractive, more part of the community, someplace that you might actually want to, you know, go on a walking trail around, um, as opposed to, you know, people walk behind the Walmart, but I don't think anybody really wants to walk back there. Uh, it can, you know, sort of a eye sore, as it was. As it were. So, um, so that's why I'm more sort of focusing on, you know, maybe speaking to the heart of the building, trying to, you know, spruce up where the um, red panels are or, or a portion thereof to make it look, you know, give it a water table or something. Give it some sort of architectural feature of a different material. That would also, I mean, you talk about taking your, your hue from other buildings in the area and some of them do have features like that. Um, in terms of, you know, like you've got the grid pilasters, but you know, water table or at least a, a base, you know, first floor. I'll just think this above. So, um, just a consideration.
It needs to be a blend and appreciation, potential appreciation from the people who are living next to this place.
Big box.
Yeah, yeah.
A big box store.
You know, I'd like the idea, whether that proves or whatever, I don't know what's going on behind it. Something that, you know, makes even if someone was walking or driving by, they'd appreciate the.
Yeah, that they just don't see the trash dumpster and the piles of pallets and all the lovely stuff that the neighbors provide the community. Shouldn't say that.
Okay. So anything further on the design?
Not on the elevation. I did have a couple of questions about the, the site plan. Uh, and I'm sure it's on a key here somewhere, but I can't find it. So if you look at sort of like, I guess, A1 and then there's some other ones. You have like large hatch areas that normally, you know, for me indicate whether it'd be like a crosswalk or something. You can go on the landscape plan and you can look here. So they're, they're like by where the gas station is. Uh, they're by, um, looks like where there's a crosswalk access. Are those, what are exactly are those hatch areas?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a good question. Those are going, it's striping, it's striping in the parking lot and that's.
That's, I guess.
That striping is to allow connectivity for the garbage trucks to be able to access the, the dumpsters that are being proposed right there. So that we didn't put them at an angle. We put them a, a far, further away from the actual buildings. And so it, it's allowing them to be able to connect into there and then back up appropriately.
Okay.
So it's providing this, it's something safe in, in a distance and a dimension for them to connect them.
Okay, got it. Cause I was like, it's not a pedestrian walkway, but now that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
So then, and you can see they're, they're only located right there. And then the third one to the north has direct access to it.
And then on the bottom, I'm assuming that's to restock the fueling station for the tanks or what is that when they're?
Yeah, that, that, that'll be striping as well. That's just a, a staging area for the tankers to be able to, to go there as well. So um, it's, it's a do not travel or, or, or drive through. Um, the circulation there is counterclockwise, um, in one way. So you go into the north and come out to the south. That'll all be striped off as well.
All right, okay. So thank you. That made sense because I, they weren't green areas and obviously they were not handicap accessible areas. So I was just curious.
I would imagine you're using that for loading to, or um, for those out parcels when they do develop to like a staging area for them to, to deliver product into the.
To, to be honest with you, uh, uh, for these in, in the out parcels that are conformed and of this nature, all of the, the loading will typically be done um, during off hours, early morning hours, low, low traffic or, or hours. So that, that'll happen for these because there isn't actually um, a, a loading dock per se for them.
Okay.
It makes perfect sense with the trash. So you don't have to worry about someone moving their cars during the trash.
Right. It's 40 feet long, so it'll, it'll accommodate loading as well.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you.
Um, I had a, a few questions here. So I think with the in regards to going back to signage a little bit. So obviously with the monument sign reduction, it used to have the fuel signage. Now that goes on to the canopy.
Yeah. So what we did is in order for us to be able to um, have a proposal for a reduced height pylon sign, we are requesting that that digital signage be added to the canopy. And I believe we talked about this last time to some degree, if I remember correctly. So we, we do know that this is still a divergence, but we debt are, are respectfully requesting that that be moved and still put on there. It's going to be on two faces. And similar to what we were proposing previously on two faces of the pylon. For us to be able to reduce that height down to 10 feet, we do want to put it up there.
Now, in regards to that, um, and I wrote it down and I can't find it, the, the height to the bottom of that canopy. Now, in regards to that, and I wrote it down and I can't find it, the, the height to the bottom of that canopy or to the, do you know what that, what that is?
I believe it was 19.
16 and a half.
16, that's.
To the bottom?
To the bottom.
Yeah.
So, and, and the answer may be no. I, I, I thought, you know, code was somewhere around 13, 14 feet in height for a canopy, for a, a fuel canopy. Is there any way to, to, to bring that height down slightly? Because we're putting signage, additional signage now on that canopy?
I, I could tell you the answer is going to be no on that one. That, that's because this has been specifically designed to be able to accommodate the, what we're going to be seeing through here, and to be able to provide the safety, the offset, the lighting, everything that you're, that, everything that we propose in as part of our package is all included with that height right now.
And that is, that's the standard height for this tenant?
Yes.
And that's what they, they always do, is 16 feet?
Yes, this, that is what they do.
I could, I, then I could be wrong on that. I, I thought that, you know, 13 or 14 foot was the, was, was the minimum required clearance, but so my, my only ask if that is the case is if there was any way to bring that down slightly, but it, it sounds like that's a no. So, okay. This is, this is kind of a, just a general.
Sorry, my name is Patrick. I'm from BJ's Social Club. I think my friend Dustin here was a little mistaken. It is 14 feet on that dimension.
Oh, okay.
That is correct. So it's 14 feet to the bottom, you're right. It's a three foot tall canopy, 17 feet to the top.
Okay, yeah, 16 and a half feet to the sign.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt, just wanted.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for my speaking.
On the grading plans, I had marked this up, if I can find it. I, I'm just curious, I guess if we even look at A5, I'm assuming that the normal pool of these detention basins is somewhere where that ripper has shown. Is there, is there, is that accurate? It's, it's obviously, the water's not going to be, you know, up to like, if we're using the detention basin on A5, it's not going to be up to that, you know, 935 or anything near the top of that. I, I didn't see any indication of where that is.
So you, you see the 100 year, it's going to be where the emergency spillway is. So if you're looking at. Sorry, A5, it's on the left side. If we're looking at the left side, what we'll call the bottom left, keep going down.
Yep.
It, we'll call it a tooth, you know, it looks like a dinosaur tooth. There's a spillway that goes to the left that goes into the stream. So that, that's the overflow for the 100 year floodplain.
Right.
That's at, what, 931? So there's still freeboard. There's about three to four feet of freeboard on that side. And then even on the other side with the roadway, there's still freeboard there as well. So the, the pooling elevation on 100 year flood is still going to be significantly below the top elevation. There's also a maintenance berm. It, that's required by the Delaware County Engineers Office. So you can see that that maintenance berm goes all the way around on, on the entire pond. The same thing is going to happen over on the east side. Now, on the east side, it's a little bit different because we're installing a forebay right there where your cursor is. So that forebay, it provided water quality benefit, things will settle out. You're getting a, a lot of impacts that are coming from the south and the out parcels that go in there first. And then that overflows into the rest of the dry detention basin. And then eventually through an equalization pipe underneath the road, they'll fill up together. And then they'll, they'll dissipate and discharge through the outlet pipe with the perforated orifice holes that are going to be installed there. Or if you've got a flood that's greater than 100 years, it'll, it'll all flood round to the existing stream in northwest corner.
So is that a bio basin then on the right?
Actually, the bio basin is down on the south side of the, the out parcels. So if you go to the right, keep going to the right. Yeah, thank you, right there. Between the out parcel and the fuel center, that's actually a bio basin. So, and that, that's required because of environmental, you know, stream and wetlands that we're, we're rerouting and, and mitigating. So we are actually installing, that's going to be a green bio basin filtration system.
Lilies or something, or is it?
Uh, I don't know the planting that, that's proposed in that area.
There will be plantings in it.
I, I think it's engineered fill is what it is. So I'm, I'm not certain on the plantings.
Okay. We'll, we'll get to public comment here soon. When we get to it, yeah, we'll, we can call you up and we can pull that back up. Is there, is there any further comments from the board?
I did have, I guess, sort of two sort of generic site plan questions, if we want to go back to A1, which is like the overall site plan. The propane area for the BJ's, is that for like the sale of propane or is, what exactly?
My understanding, we've got the expert here behind it, but I'll go ahead and try to speak to it. Yeah. It's, it's located right in front of that, that label. I think it says tires.
Yes.
So that is where, where they distribute it. There's an intercom system that's going to be there. My understanding that you, you purchased it on the inside. Once you purchase it, then you come out with the, and there's an intercom there and a gate and a lock, and then it lets you to go in and get your propane tank from that location.
Okay, because I know normally we don't have like outdoor displays of material. We do have propane on the outside because you can't have it on the inside. And normally if you go to other stores, it's like in a locker on the side of the building or near the side of the building. So I don't know how people feel about that, meaning an outdoor display. The reason we've prohibited outdoor displays is because some of them do not maintain the, I'm trying to figure out how to say this diplomatically, that some of them detract from the area, they have a trash accumulation, things like that around outdoor displays.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking about how that is, what that is going to look like. You've provided like all the dumpster details. We asked for to make sure all the trash is nicely contained so people don't have to see it. So that's why I sort of brought up the propane thing of what is that going to look like? Because we generally, I don't know, Dennis, you know what I'm talking about. You might be have a better way to say it than I can.
No, I, I, I didn't even catch that.
Okay.
Because again, it's just like what part of what they do, but.
It, it's, it's going to be chain link fenced and gated in that area to be able to provide security so that, that people can access that. There will be a push button intercom on a pedestal, I believe is right there as well. And so it's, it's a location where you can take empty propane tanks and actually go there and get them filled, not necessarily an exchange, but, but a filling at that location. And that's the whole purpose of it. It's not for advertisement. It's just another convenience that BJ's offers to their, their faithful customers.
I would, and I understand the need to have the propane outside. I'm not even questioning that. I wouldn't want the propane on the inside. I just wanted sort of know more of what that's going to look like before we have sort of a chain link enclosure.
The difference to me between this and a standard outdoor display is that it would always be consistent. You know, because it's, it's part of the regular store operations with respect to going, picking it up or refilling it. So it's, it's not going to change. It's not going to be cluttered. It's not going to look different. It's going to be consistent. I think that's the one difference to me.
Yes. So I was just asking that because like I said, we asked for dumpster enclosures to make sure we know what we're getting in terms of the dumpster enclosure. So I'm just going to put that up there for the commission, and that's why I asked about it. I like what you did with reducing the parking and giving more green space to the apartment complex and how we have sort of that green lawn in the center. My question was, I'm assuming that's going to be mowed as opposed to, you know, passive green space. I'd like to sort of see it activated in terms of, are there going to be walk paths? Are there, is there going to be a dog park? My concern, I guess, is I like the green space, is that it might not be maintained, and then it won't necessarily contribute to the apartment community. Do you understand the question I'm getting at?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be maintained much like the rest of the property. So we're proposing landscaping, we're proposing trees and shrubs all, all through the entire property. We're proposing things to be landscaped so that they'll, they'll be mowed and maintained and, and there'll be good quality products and standards that are. We, we, we want this to be successful as well. You know, we definitely don't want this to be something that has a reputation in the community. We want to, if there is any reputation, we want that to be positive, and we want that to be something where it's, it's a destination and a place that people enjoy.
So that's the answer I wanted to hear. Thank you. But it's not shown on the current plans in terms of landscaping or any sort of, you know, like I said, walkways or, you know, benches or whatever. So if you could make sure that there's a provision like that, so we know what that green space is going to look like. What we don't want it to look like is we'll feel that it's there right now. Make sense?
Understood.
Thank you. All right, that's, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Any further comments from the board?
So it doesn't need to, that the person's going to take care of that green space.
For HOA?
HOA.
Is that what you were saying?
It, it's going to be on the individual who owns the land at that time, you know.
It's the apartment complex.
Well, that's right.
Well, it's, it's the applicant, you know, the applicant. So, and then who, they turn over the maintenance responsibilities. So when I talk about maintenance responsibilities, it's not just that open space, but the rest of the, the entire development as well is going to be maintained. So we want it to be aesthetically pleasing. We want things to grow. We don't want things to die. We're providing trees and islands. We don't want them to go away either. We want it to be trimmed and hedged, so, and pruned properly. So it'll, it'll get attention and detail, not, not just there, but for the rest of the site as well.
The only other question I, I sort of, this was just for me, I noted, you've asked for a reduction in the parking depth from the 20 to the 18. And usually I have no problem with that because it provides more aisle width for cars to get by. But you didn't label all the, I guess, aisle width around the apartment complex. So you just make sure that it's all, you know, at distance with so two-way traffic can get around there. So like on the south side, we have 26. On the north side, where it's one way, it's 13. But I don't know what it is.
No, 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 it's, it's 26 all the way around. It's 13 to the center line.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Sorry, sorry for that confusion. It, it is consistent all the way around.
All right, so if you could just sort of clarify that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we don't have any difficulties with two-way traffic.
Before we open it up to public comment, I do have one question. Maybe this is more for legal. So FIRE has not approved this. If, if this, in hypothetical, if things move forward, is, is, I mean, is there any risk in not having FIRE's approval or review completed?
How far has it gone so far?
They've, they've seen the initial review, yes.
So.
And my understanding, it's only hydrant issues at this point. So, so we're, we're, we're closed, but.
Okay.
I don't, I think the site itself is okay. Correct?
Yeah, the, the site that they saw, there was fire, fire hydrant issues, and then now with the new site plan that has the drive-throughs on the outlets and, and the previous one did not have that. So FIRE is going to look at the drive-throughs. But other than that, they were fine with, this is pretty much the same setup for the multifamily as what the FIRE originally had seen, and they were okay with it.
So is it worth putting in, if, you know, is it worth making a comment that this is pending approval of FIRE or? I mean, that, that it's.
You could. I think certainly, I mean.
It's a stipulation or something that, that FIRE has no comments or concerns?
You could. So two things. First of all, access is clearly the bigger, the bigger issue, right? And I'm sure you're well aware, but if they had had a problem with that, we, we'd be at a different point in the, I mean. Because if they can't get, physically get around the roads, then we can't.
Yeah.
As far as location of, if we're talking location of hydrants, number, location, A, I think it's understood that you.
Yeah, we absolutely want their approval. So we, we don't want to move forward without their consent, and we certainly aren't going to do anything without their approval.
Right. So I think it's understood, but if you wanted to add up specifically.
So, so just so I understand, so we could add modifications requesting approval letter from the FIRE department prior to trustee decision?
Sure, is that something?
That, that, yeah. That would be much agreeable to us if that would be allowed.
Okay, at this time, this time we're going to open it up to a public comment. Just a couple of ground rules real quick. Any residents wishing to speak tonight, please stick to the merits of the case, state your name and address before speaking. Try to limit your comments, you know, to, to three minutes, please, and, you know, refrain from having redundant comments. So if someone's already made the comment, there's no reason to come up and, and make the same comment. Do we have anybody here in the public that wishes to speak tonight? Do you want us to pull that site plan back up with the grading, or is this one okay?
Down a little bit so I can see.
With the resident, you want to see other direction?
Other direction.
Residents, to the north there. Right there?
Right. Now, I'm a resident here.
Ma'am, can you come up to the podium?
We're, we're on YouTube, so if you could say your name and address off the microphone. Thank you.
Candace Sarnofsky, 8144, Seminole Pass Way. And the question is, are you going to extend Orange Center basically by the cemetery and beside our development? And then there's a ravine there. Does that ravine stay because it's a natural drainage? And then on the other side of the ravine, before you get to the apartment complex, is, are the trees going to be saved or are they going to be torn down? Where?
Yeah, well, is there any other questions that you have? We'll, we'll have Dustin address those. I, I will say, and I'll let him speak to that, there, there is a culvert that they're installing, a box culvert they're installing there. They are not impacting the stream. They actually, you know, EPA reasons they can't. They're going over it.
But I'm concerned about the trees on the other side of the ravine that would be abutting the parking of the apartment complex. Is there going to be a protective strip of trees there, or does it all get torn down?
We can have the applicant speak to that. I think that there are some trees remaining there. I think the landscape plan had, there is a buffer, I believe, and, and he can, he can answer that question.
And then the other question is, is there access to BJ's or any of this off of High Field?
There, yeah, there is a, a rear access to the south side there behind where the loading, or near the loading dock of the BJ's.
Because the most I'm concerned about Orange Center is narrow. Semis are going to go through there to supply BJ's. And that's the most logic, maybe the most logical place for some of the FIRE department, should there be an emergency. And semis turning in there and that sort of thing, I, I think it's kind of hazardous. If there would be an entrance off of High Field, there is an entrance to the BJ's offer.
Okay, which is fired.
The applicants can speak to how the BJ's will operate. So there would be possibility of like fire entering that way or semi trucks going in that way rather than taking Orange Center and curving around.
I could not speak to the FIRE department. I think the FIRE department does whatever the FIRE department needs to do in an emergency. And like I said, I think the applicant can talk about.
Because what we have here are multiple condo communities from Orange Road to you get to the chiller and all along hidden ravines. And those residential neighborhoods are going to be split by an increase in traffic. Now, I'm not totally, I'm not really concerned about passenger cars or vans or anything like that, but semi trucks, you know, those are some tight turns. If they come in from, I guess not Green Acres, something green, something and go through that roundabout, you know, that's difficult too.
Yeah, and I know from a previous meeting, we did talk about deliveries and coming in here, and I believe that, that the applicant stated that most of, the majority of these would be happening after hours at, at, at a time where, you know, there's not going to be a lot of traffic anyways at, at that time. But again, we'll, we'll have him respond to that question for you.
Because we have elderly residents who often cross. Because we have elderly residents who often cross hidden ravines to get to the clubhouse and swimming pool on the other side. And if cars are racing through there.
Yeah.
You know, it's a safety hazard. I almost think we need one of those crosswalk signs, like you have on Orange Road, for safety. We've got to be concerned about safety of the existing residents. And likewise, there's another condo development that has its clubhouse and its swimming pool on the other side of Highfield, so they've got to walk across, too. And, you know, all of us in all those condos, you know, we pay some pretty sizable taxes. And I think our safety is not being considered here. And maybe this is the wrong place to talk about it. Maybe that's the county engineer, I don't know. But I'm concerned about access, and I'm concerned about maintaining as many trees as we can behind ourselves on and where the apartment complex begins. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Any further comments from the public? Yes, sir. You can come up here and state your name and address, please.
My name's Bud Manley, and I live at 305 Summer Tree Way. And I have a couple of comments, and maybe I just wasn't paying attention earlier. As far as the BJ's sign, and from what I could tell in looking at the display, it looked like it was pretty, pretty far off of 23. Is that, has that been moved in a subsequent thing, or is this the most, were we looking at the most current rendition of it?
That, so that sign has moved. It partially because of our direction in a previous meeting. Previously, when this was originally submitted, it was under a different, it was under the overlay, so there was restrictions. That sign was much further north. It has now been moved to a location that may be more appropriate for where the tenant's located. Again, you know, we can have the applicant speak to that question.
So could someone just show me on this map exactly where that BJ's sign?
Yep, so it's right. So there's the fuel center to the south part of the parcel there.
Okay.
To the, to the left side of this plan is 20, or, I'm sorry, 23, 7, yeah.
So we're going to have four, four signs in a row? Correct?
That is correct.
So I understand.
That is correct.
That's all I wanted to know. And the other question that I had, or maybe it's just a comment, when you were making the comments about being with everything in the construction of BJ's building, looking like all their other BJ buildings, I don't know that that's a big concern. The only other BJ's we have around here is in New Albany's. I don't know if people are going to actually make that connection, so I don't see how important that would be to make it look like the random other BJ's. And I think your comments as far as making sure that we can spruce that up a little bit, I don't think it'll make a bit of difference to anyone around here that decides they would rather go to BJ's than Costco, or Sam's, or any other, any other of the discount places. So as far as that, that rendition of it, showing it to be consistent with all the other ones, I don't think that's important at all. Not to me, and I don't think it'll make a difference to other people, too. I realize that might be my own personal opinion, but I think it's important in this case, especially since you brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, Dustin, did you want to respond to some of those comments?
So just to answer the first question with respect to the trees, as you can see on this exhibit, the, those green lines, both on that west side there and on the east side, are what's in Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Environmental Covenant. Those covenants are going to be in perpetuity. They are do-not-disturb limits. Those are limits that we can't disturb even with grading. So there's no clearing, there's no grading, there's no impacts that will occur either pre-construction, during construction, or afterwards. Those will be regulated by the state agency, and those will not have any impact with the existing foliage or vegetation or landscaping in that area. Anything that's off of our site to the north that runs along that stream, we're not touching, it's not our property, we're not going to be impacting. So there is an existing stream, there is a stream corridor that is along there as well. So we're not impacting anything along either the south side of the existing multifamily or the dentist's office. Additionally, I cannot speak to the pedestrian connectivity and the safety that's outside of our limits or our development, so I can't speak to Highfield, I can't speak to hidden ravines. But what I can say is that we've done the greatest degree of trying to be able to protect pedestrian connectivity along this corridor, and that is because we've provided a green space between the edge of the proposed curb and where we're proposing to install the pedestrian limits. So there is a buffer, which is, one, a regulation of ODOT for the clear space requirements, but there, there's a tree lawn that's going to be installed right there. So there's an offset. We're also extending that offset all the way through the three-sided box culvert that we're proposing. So we're not going to be putting that, that bike path and that multi-use path closer to the road, it's still going to be extended with the offset. And we're taking it all the way to the north along the east side of Orange Center Drive to the actual intersection that goes into the multifamily. And this was a discussion that we had with Orange Township, and this was a much better crossing that happens at the intersection. And there's going to be piano striping that goes from the east side to the west side, so you can cross over to access the cemetery appropriately. We thought that that would be a much better safe than crossing than a mid-block crossing. Particularly, this also puts it relatively close to the intersection with hidden ravines, and that also provides another level of safety, because individuals turning will have to accelerate, and they won't be accelerated to full speed at that point in time. Individuals approaching from the south to the north will be decelerating. So that, that's a much safer crossing. So our pedestrian connectivity in this, in this development has been considered with safety in mind throughout the extent of it. Then with respect to BJ's looking like BJ's in other locations, I mean, that's similar with other developments, either commercial or retail, branding is highly, highly required when it comes to this type of market. And so we definitely would want this to look like a building, so you can recognize that building. Many people travel, many people go to other locations, many people use other destinations, and everybody knows what the Golden Arch looks like when they go and see the Golden Arch. And that's the same thing that we want to happen here, when they see this building, that everybody knows and recognizes exactly what they're looking at, and there's no disparity. So.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Is there any further comments from the board? Anything additional? Anything that we need to touch on? Dustin, this is more of a personal preference, so take it for what you will, but this is a large property. It has some topography to it now that I have the grading plan. I will say, you know, I know there's going to be some dirt movement on here, and one thing, I think, I think I personally would appreciate if we can avoid, you know, significant mounding or piles of dirt, you know, spoils and things like that, similar to what we're seeing in other developments. You know, quite frankly, it's a, it's an EPA violation because it can't be, it usually isn't getting stabilized. I'm not saying that, you know, if we could limit it to 15-foot or so of height and not just stockpile everything in a big, you know, 30-foot pile, it would, it would be appreciated. I don't think we really have anything in our code that regulates that, but we have it in other developments currently. So take it for what you will.
I'm sorry, what was, I think I missed that. For the, you want 30 feet and?
So when, yeah, when the spoils of the foundations, as well as the topsoil scraped off, usually it ends up in one big, you know, 20-foot pile or 30-foot pile. I think if we could limit it to below 20 feet, it would be ideal. It's not anything that can technically enforce, we don't have anything in our code currently stating that, but, you know, those piles don't get stabilized, it is a violation for EPA if it's sitting more than seven days. Okay, so, if there's no further comments?
I think before we're ready to make a recommendation, I would like to request a 10-minute recess for us to kind of clean up the language with counsel.
Yep. Okay, let's do that. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Come on.
Our audience left. Didn't wanna hear the outcome.
All right, can I get a motion to come back from recess?
So moved.
Becca.
Motion made by Mr. McNulty to come back from recess, seconded by Mr. Pierce, is voting Mr. Pahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Okay, um, so can I get a motion to approve, um, the zoning application ZON-21-07 for JLP Orange LLC with the stated modifications?
Motion by Mr. McNulty to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, Board of the approval with modifications of zoning application ZON-21-07, Hidden Ravines Crossing of JLP Orange LLC, the pages of which are each stamped received with the Orange Township zoning on three dot one dot twenty-two, requesting the rezoning of thirty-one point one-three plus minus acres from farm residential district to planned commercial and office district TCD, including the requested, requested divergences on finding that as an interest of public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare are sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan and including additional modifications listed below. Number one, modify development text to include divergence request of allowing more than one monument side, sign, provide a maximum of four such signs. Extend proposed trail easement to go all along the frontage on Route 23 and on the south side of Orange Center Drive in between Route 23 and the commercial entrance. Number three, provide additional architectural elements on primary, primary building elevations, BJ's, specifically add a continuous row of brick columns labeled as MB dash one on all sides of building elevations. Number four, for divergence request regarding light poles, provide further justification in development text. Number five, monument sign display area for each monument sign associated with each outlaw, outlaw shall not exceed thirty-eight square feet per side. Number six, create an active recreation space with seating, pass, et cetera, in the open space surrounding the apartment clubhouse and swimming pool. Number seven, for applicant's agreement, provide approval letter from fire department prior to Board of Trustees' decision. Further move that the zoning secretary self-certify a copy of this resolution to the Board.
All right, we had a motion from Mr. McNulty to approve the resolution to recommend approval of zoning application ZON-21-07 of JLP Orange LLC with the modifications, seconded by Mr. Pierce, is voting Mr. Pahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
I'm gonna go with you now.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, can I ask a pragmatic question? In the past, we usually had stipulations and the applicant had to agree to them, are we no longer working on that method, or how do we know whether or not these items will be addressed, especially if the applicant didn't agree with them?
Our, our assumption was based on the discussion that we had here, so.
Okay, I was just gonna bring that up because that's not how things have worked in the past, um, and, okay, is that true?
And you, and you may not know, I mean, but, but the point of, again, this, this body sits as recommending to trustees, so that, that's your input to the trustees, they as always could take or leave your stipulations or these modifications, that's still true, but listing them out brings them an extra attention, and again, it was our open intent that it sort of captured the conversation that happened here tonight, including the agreement that were made by the applicant.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Oh, yes, I have to, if we can add something to the agenda, I know we have two things, but I would like to designate Nancy Fay, our zoning assistant, as our, our zoning secretary so she can sign off on these, these recommendations, do we need to do a motion for that? Okay, so I'd like to request the commission to make a motion to set Nancy Fay as our designated zoning secretary.
So moved.
Thanks.
We had a motion by Mr. Pahavich to appoint Nancy Fay to represent as the zoning secretary for the recommendation, seconded by Ms. Harris, is voting Mr. Pahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And just another housekeeping item, the trustees on Monday did initiate tax amendments to move forward with the Route 23 corridor overlay district, so it is going to regional planning at the end of this month, a further hearing, but we would like to have that for the zoning commission, I think, in your first meeting in April, on April 12th, is that of any concern? So we'll send out notices, but just wanted to give you all an update on that.
Concerns? That date?
Oh. Well, I'm in the middle of that date.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
She might not be here for the rest of the week.
So that will be our next zoning commission meeting.
April 12th?
April 12th, yep. An extended spring break.
That's why I was checking right now and remembering where spring break was.
All righty, well, I guess meeting is adjourned.